Only mode.
And we'll go ahead and get started just a half a minute early, so I'll call the meeting to order, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item on our agenda today is an update from Economic Development Corporation.
Good afternoon, Dale Booth, Willy County Economic Development. It's a pleasure to see you all. Just a couple of things, a couple of wins for the county. There is a regional development authority which we, along with ten other counties in Northeast Indiana are a part of, and they have this thing called Ready. Hopefully, you're somewhat familiar with it. I know this gentleman is. And we were fortunate enough that Turtle Meadows and Sheriff Bosco, there's a proposal with a developer there to put up about seventy different units of housing, which is very much needed, especially for the Smith-Green school system. It's about a twenty million dollar development, but they do need some help on the infrastructure, especially water and sewer, and they were awarded a million-dollar grant from the Ready proposal. One of the things they liked about it is there was a residential tip involved, and so it's a way to putting some of that money back into the next project. But big win for Willy County, and I'm glad we had a small, very small part in that. Just another update. If you'll recall, I don't know how many times I've talked about this, the Indiana Small Business Development Center for the entire area comes to our offices about once a month and meets with small businesses who are working on business plans or expansion or growth or those kind of things. They do it at no cost. It's federally funded. But it's nice that they can come into this building and use that space. This year, they've met with over twenty-one different Willy County companies and helped them. Some of them then come forward to the economic development and apply for our revolving loan funds, which is really nice, but it just, I think there's a robust small business and kind of entrepreneurship community in Willy County. I'm really pleased that they come into this building and get some assistance they need. Kind of the last little thing, you know, we've been talking for so long about broadband, rural broadband, we've talked about Lakeland a little bit, but several of us on the task force, including Commissioner Basinger, were on the phone with ServNet the other day, and we were really pleased to hear what, again, they're going to make another investment in Willy County. And their investments now millions and millions of dollars. Even though they had to ask for kind of some matching funds, they're going to go ahead and make a few more connections without any matching funds, but then they're also going to apply for the federal BEAD funding that's coming, hopefully in January. We say hopefully because everything gets delayed, but I just kind of a shout out to SERV that once again, they're investing in Willy County and they're really working on the difficult kind of rural fiber connections, so just really good news.
Great, very good.
Awesome. And then just one other one, I'm still getting assistance from Sand Strategies on a lot of this stuff, and I'm, we've been able to take on a little bit of kind of a line item in our budget to kind of reimburse them for some of those expenses. So we're still going to have them helping us. We won't lose all the, kind of the work they've done getting us to here.
Good, very good.
All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, Nathan Beuger, rezoning and plat approvals.
Which one do you want to tackle first?
Whichever one you grab first.
I just have to ask. I've got three plats here. Hopefully, you guys have three plats in your packet. If not, we'll have to sort which ones you did have.
In our packet, we just have Zimbrum Manor.
Just Zimbrum? Okay, then we'll hold those for the next meeting. So Zimbrum Minor Subdivision is located on 200 southeast of State Route 5. What they did was went to auction, there were a couple parcels that were able to be split that were exempt from subdivision plating. This one, though, due to its size, wound up needing to be platted, so it's bounded by a couple ditches, so there's a lot of, there is a legal drain easement, there is a non-legal drain that is actually a development issue with a pretty steep bank there, some dedicated right-of-way involved with this, so you'd be looking at accepting the easements that are involved and, more importantly, the right-of-way. So comes to you with approval from the Plaid Commission, of course, so.
Any questions for Nathan?
No, I would move to approve this request as presented, Zimbrum Minor Subdivision.
Second.
Cab a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. And opposed, the same, and that passes unanimously.
I'll leave that there for you for later. So the rezoning request is 24 W R E Z six, which was tabled from the last meeting. I believe you guys had wanted to look at potential uses, use commitments, and then also the status of the NDOT driveway permit. I reached out to NDOT earlier today and haven't heard a status directly from them. However, the petitioners are here, so you could talk with them if you wish.
Yeah. I'll recognize Jay or Jennifer Estreline to come forward and speak to that.
So right now, we're working with Flex Little Construction out of Pierston. They're going to be the ones getting the permit pulled for us for the driveway. I called them this morning to see how they're working on it and left a message, waiting for the message, so.
Okay.
So we are working on that, and if you guys want to table it until we get that pulled, that's fine, I can let you know.
Yeah. While Jay's here, are there any other questions about the request? Again, it passed in the Plaid Commission unanimously with the favorable recommendation of the commissioners, and in our last meeting, you guys weren't here, but I didn't want to, I don't want you to be fearful, like, I believe we're supportive.
Sure.
We just also wanted to take a deeper dive at what are the appropriate uses?
Right.
And maybe strike some that are, but not in a way that would restrict what you're trying to accomplish.
Sure.
And I know personally, like, I looked at the list that Nathan had sent, but I didn't, I didn't go through and strike anything.
We went through, started it, and it was like, I don't know what to cross off.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate your effort on that. I think it would be appropriate for us to include one or both when we dive into that, but.
Sure.
I don't know if we're prepared to make any motions today, knowing that the NDOT permit is pending and that we haven't had a chance to, to strike some of these things that are never really going to be appropriate for this property.
So I'd move to table this matter until some of those questions can be answered.
Okay, and the clock is running, but we're in a good place, right?
Another seventy-five days or so.
Yeah.
You've got time.
Okay. So I have a motion, do I have a second? Okay, I have a motion and a second to table. Any further discussion? Hearing that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand, and opposed, the same, and that passes unanimously.
Okay, I will get these to you for your next meeting.
And then, do you want to work with Jennifer and Jay to schedule time that we can, or do you want us to? We can do that.
Well.
You can tell me now.
Getting the three of you together is probably the hardest piece.
It's bad, I know.
So why don't we figure out the time that works for you guys and then work from there on? So I know with the holidays, that gets a little tight, too.
Yeah.
We'll get it figured out, and I'll work with you on some of the questions about what is this use and that use and so on, so.
Gotcha.
Both parties, of course, so.
Okay. Great.
Thank you.
Scott Wagner, you're up.
I have the last two contracts for you of the nine. First Indiana funds.
And you did say, you did just say this is the last.
The last two of the nine. We have Smith-Green Schools and Willy County Transit.
Okay.
They both submitted a budget plan, both will be recording their key performance indicators for us, like we wrote it last time. You had those last time for the schools, then get theirs funding in January and August.
Okay.
Probably be replying, probably will be replying with numbers in July, so we'll figure out a time to get that, these numbers from them, so.
Okay.
Any questions at all? The budget has been approved by the State of Indiana. Tiffany's sent back her letter, so she should be good to go for the first of January.
Okay. Any questions for Scott?
I don't know.
These agreements, the one for Smith-Green Community Schools, I'll just state that it's for seven thousand five hundred, and I believe they'd be using that for clothing and food.
Right, she has on her budget there multiple uses for that, including teaching CPR. Her budget doesn't come to seventy-five hundred, but I thought we'd still leave it our budget the same because they'll probably do their things later on.
Gotcha. And then for Willy County Council on Aging, which is Willy County Transit, the amount is ten thousand four hundred six and fifty cents.
You'll see on her budget, she's broken down into quarters, several different categories of who would be eligible for that, and basically tracking medical and mental health appointments.
Okay.
So many of our citizens can get those trips for free because of this funding.
Yep. And in case you've missed it, just a statement for public awareness, these are funds that are granted by the state for the Health First Indiana Initiative. That was Governor Holcomb's initiative, where they, each county took a share of the money that was allocated by the state legislator, and the funds have to be used for community health initiatives. So we've, in Willy County, we've decided to partner with organizations like our school corporations and mental health providers and transportation, and they'll take care of a lot of the reporting, but they'll also get the funds that they can then use to improve overall health in Willy County.
Right, and those, the Health Department staff will do also some of those key performance indicators as well as supplement what they're already doing.
Yep. Just kind of wanted to remind everyone what it is that we're doing. If I missed anything, then please.
No, it'll be interesting to see in this legislative session starting in January how that goes from beyond this because that's not set at the end of '25.
Yep. Okay, any other questions for Scott?
No. I'll move to approve the Health First Indiana contracts with the Willy County Council on Aging, Willy County Transit, and for Smith-Green Community Schools as presented.
Second.
Cab a motion and a second to approve. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand, and opposed, the same, and that passes unanimously. Do you have copies from your side?
Those are the copies for you to sign, those are the originals.
I wrote on them.
Here, you can. It's okay. It's our copies.
I got you.
Why don't you just X anything out and strike any sentences?
Well, yeah.
Okay. Any questions for the Health Department General? I did report to the council after our last meeting that I expect the flu and COVID to be high during Christmas break. It's starting to swell now, it'll probably be worse in two weeks.
You said there was something to do with water testing or something that then it follows a couple weeks after that?
Yes.
We didn't need to hear about that again.
Scott, don't wish that upon us.
I'm just reporting the facts, so you can't say you weren't aware that it's going to happen. But yes, the wastewater tracking is indicating that that will happen.
For the record, I had COVID last week, and I blame you because I got sick the day you reported that to council.
Monkey do, monkey do.
All right, anything else for Scott? Next item on the agenda, we'll talk about updated facility requests forms.
Yeah, we, after discussion at the last meeting about, you know, people requesting county property well, well in advance, just not being prepared to accept that, so I amended the policy and added a rent request will not be approved more than ninety days prior to an event in order for the county to properly evaluate the feasibility and availability of the requested county property.
And everyone's comfortable with that language?
Yeah.
I'm comfortable with that language. I did have conversation with one of the affected parties, a requestor for a facility request, and they did bring up a good point, that it's kind of hard to prepare or plan for an event not knowing any sooner than the three months from the event. My response was, I think you should plan your event as though it will be approved, and if it's not approved, you have three months to come up with a different venue or cancel or reschedule your event, and I assume that's an appropriate response, but...
Yeah, I mean, as long as you're giving equal treatment to everybody requesting, that's their policy, and I mean, it's not like it's a reception hall, it's government property.
Right.
You don't know what is going to be necessary from day to day, much less month to month, so I don't think it's, you know, outside the norm or outside of what's reasonable.
Yep. Well, I would entertain a motion to accept the changes to the policy.
So moved.
I'll second that, just with a comment. And then also, when you are turning these forms in, explain what it is you're doing. If it's, for instance, like, we have some groups that gather that like to pray, and they usually include about how many, and we know what that includes, we know it's not going to be tearing up county property, however, if you want to have something much bigger than that, personally, I need a lot more details, and I, we chatted this morning about it, and old settlers, they added like a hot air balloon thing. Well, I held their request up for, I think it was like four months because I wanted to ensure it wasn't going to tear up the lawn. So when you are turning these in, give us a lot of details because personally, I want to know, are you going to have like food vendors, like, what is it that you're going to be using the property for, not just a two-line on the day and the time that you'd like to request it?
Okay, any other comments? All right, I have a motion and a second to accept the changes to the policy for facility requests. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand, and opposed, the same, and that passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is our EMS agreement with Park View. This is a three-year agreement, comes up every, every three years, and I know that Andy, you had a chance to dig into that and find that there needed to be basically consent from the city of Thunder City in order for us to enter into an agreement that includes them.
And that's specifically under new statute, and yeah, that agreement bound the city, which we don't have the right to do. So the city, at their last meeting, passed a resolution approving this agreement. So now we're ready to go.
Okay, so has everyone had a chance then to review our agreement with Park View?
Yes.
There is an escalation. The price will increase each year. Just want to make sure that that's fully disclosed. And do we have, we need to approve that agreement, and I didn't bring that agreement with me.
The Park View agreement?
Yeah. Are there any markups from the draft?
No, we, we had that agreement finalized probably a month and a half ago.
Okay.
So there hasn't been any changes since then.
Okay, so do you have that, the version that was approved a month and a half ago?
Yeah, I can send that to you if you want to approve.
I think we can, we can approve it, and then I, we can just sign it at our leisure afterward, but we have to have that approved today, so.
Yes.
Are there any questions about what's in it?
No.
I know that everybody's seen it, we've had it for six months as a draft, so.
I move to approve the EMS agreement as presented.
Second.
Cab a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? And then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand, and opposed, the same, and that passes unanimously. Real quick, as an addition to our agenda today, our Highway Director, Ryan Getz, is here to discuss bid acceptance for a single-axle dump truck. Do you want to give us the highlights? Do you want to explain to us what it is?
This is the, last month or earlier this month, the council had approved us to move forward with receiving bids for two new 2025 single-axle dump trucks. This is the bid information packet that will go out to, will be advertised, will also go out to those dealers that have already expressed interest in providing a bid.
Okay. So we are approving the bid packet.
That front page is just outlined with your signatures and a test with auditor. And other pages are specifications that are required for the dump trucks, bodies and chassis. And I appreciate you guys squeezing me in here.
Yeah.
I sent my email, it was information that came a lot sooner than I anticipated, so it's a good thing.
It's good.
I would move that we accept the bid packet as presented.
Second.
Cab a motion and a second to accept the bid packet, the notice to bidders. Is there any further discussion? And then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand, and opposed, the same, and that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we did also get a facility request. This is, the organization is Katie's Joy. They are requesting the use of the gazebo on December 24th, 2024. This is the annual support to fire department, sent to visit on Christmas Eve. There will be music, live music for cars in queue at Market Street for one hour. They'd like to set up at 4:30, and the performance will be from 6:00 until 7:00 p.m., and it will be holiday music. This is an annual event. They've done this in the past.
I would move that we accept the facility request as presented.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand, and opposed, the same, and that passes unanimously. You'll just have to put a line through. And again, I guess while we're, while we're signing, I'll remind everyone that the form has been updated, and so this, this form that we're signing has a previous commissioner's name on it, and I assume, I can only assume that they were provided the attached documents, but I would just, for general awareness, if you're bringing forward a facilities request, please ensure that you're using the most current form.
Would you like me to amend my motion to include if they do a current form, because I know it also has the damages disclaimer on it as well, just to be fair.
Yeah, in those attached documents, yes. I don't know that we can amend.
Oh, I was thinking.
We've already voted, I don't know that we can amend, but I think we can.
You can do a new, a new motion.
A new motion, yeah, would be appropriate.
I would make a motion to accept the request as presented, pending filling out the correct and most updated facilities request form.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All of it up for discussion. And just for clarity, are we, are we reaching out to them to ask them to complete a new document?
Yes.
Okay. All right, sounds good. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand, and opposed, the same, and that passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is payroll and accounts payable claims approval.
I went up mostly Friday and then finished this morning, looked through everything as far as payroll and claims and everything looked to be fine. Tiffany was there to answer a couple of questions I had, so I'll move to approve accounts payable.
Second.
Cab a motion and a second to approve accounts payable. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hands, and that motion carries unanimously.
Also looked over payroll, and it looked to be in order, so I will move to approve payroll.
Second.
Cab a motion and a second to approve payroll. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand, and that motion carries unanimously. And the last item on our agenda is our previous meeting minutes. This would be from our December 2nd meeting. Has everyone had a chance to review?
I would move that we approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Cab a motion and a second to approve. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand, and opposed, the same, and that passes unanimously. And while we're signing, Andy, do you have anything that you'd like to add?
I have one thing. So last week, I circulated a draft of the, an ordinance establishing kind of fees throughout all departments. We had talked about this several months ago, and then what I did, too, is I added here the fuel cost for the non-county entities, cost plus twenty cents, and then county entities cost plus ten percent, or ten cents. I think probably the best thing to do is to circulate this to all the county departments to review and make sure their costs are properly reflected.
Okay.
And if we could get feedback in the next couple of weeks before the next meeting, holidays are tough, so who knows, but when we have the opportunity to get all the feedback passed, we could pass, we could pass this, then you'd have a uniform list of all the fees the county charges for everything.
Okay.
And I've talked to Ryan and got the details about how people, how entities get their fuel and how they're billed, so I'm going to put together a separate, kind of simple agreement, as you requested, that each of them can sign a contract about how they get their fuel.
Yep, good. Yeah, I think that will help protect not only us, but also them as the end user, so it only makes sense that there's... the end user. So it only makes sense that there's some sort of a simple agreement for, for those users outside of Whitley County government. So I don't know that there needs to be an agreement for users inside county government. Do you?
If they're departments of yours, probably not.
Yeah, okay. All right, any questions about that? Anything else, Andy?
No, that's it.
Okay. I do know that the city of Columbia City would greatly appreciate the use of our facility, as theirs is aging and the cost to replace or repair is more than what they would like to invest at this time. So the sooner, the better that we can get this completed. So hopefully, we can just add this to our agenda for the next meeting.
If for some reason that it can't coordinate all the departments by the next meeting, we could just pass the fuel cost, and I can have that agreement ready for the next meeting.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, good, good. Any questions? Okay, so Tiffany, anything that you'd like to add?
No.
Okay. At this time, I'll open up for public comment. So at this time, if you'd like to come forward and speak, the microphone is yours. Hearing none for a public comment. Commissioner Basinger, anything to add?
I just hope everyone has a great Christmas and a great New Year.
Commissioner Seaman?
I have nothing.
And I have nothing to add, so at this time, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thanks for coming.